Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call this meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor.
Here.
Squire Gentry.
Here.
Squire Varner.
Here.
Squire Carl.
Here.
Squire Downey.
Here.
Squire Blackford.
That's it.
Squire Hill.
Here.
Squire Brown.
Let the record reflect all members of the court are present and accounted for. Offering our invocation tonight is Joe Lauderdale of Living Faith Church. Pastor Lauderdale, would you please come and approach the mic and turn on the, the mic?
Lord, we are thankful for this time together. Lord, we are thankful for leaders in this community who are compassionate, who have grace and mercy, God, who have wisdom. We pray for that continued wisdom as they continue to be the governing body of this county. Lord, let all good things come. Lord, let all your blessings flow, Lord, and let all, everything they touch, everything they decide be blessed by you, Lord, and, and be reflected in their behavior with each other and with the community. We ask all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Lauderdale. I think I said living faith, I meant living grace. Living faith is what you do. Living grace is your church. And we'd like to thank you and your church for your leadership in the warming station in Woodford County and all that you and your congregation are doing. Thank you. Would you please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to open up the floor for anybody seeking public comment. Anybody wishing to address the court or the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to, actually before I move on to the good of the county, Woodford County lost two important individuals. We lost Jack Whitaker, who is a veteran and served on the Woodford County Veterans Commission. And we also lost Mr. Ken Brothers, who served on the Northeast Woodford Water District. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize and honor those individuals in their own right. First of all, most folks knew Jack Whitaker. He was a, a great man. He was a veteran, as I mentioned, and he was a proud Woodford Countyan. He went to the University of Kentucky. He was a teacher and a basketball coach. He retired from State Auto and he served in the United States Coast Guard and was a faithful and loyal member of the American Legion post 67. He was a member of Versailles Baptist Church and he was a former charter member of the Woodford Hills Country Club. But most recently, in, in his later years, Jack really spent a lot of time supporting and doing things to help out veterans, even though he was a veteran himself and getting up in age and had his own issues. He faithfully served the veteran community in Woodford County. And he was one of the first people to volunteer to serve on the Woodford Veterans Commission. Jack's father was a WWII hero, Chester Wilson. And when Jack became, got down with some issues with his hearing and seeing, his stepdad, Chester Wilson, would, at the age of 90, would drive him around. And they were, they were just a family that loved this country, that loved this community. They were both veterans and it was very sad to hear that Jack passed away. But we send our prayers to his son, John, and to his family. And tonight, the Woodford County Fiscal Court honors a great Woodford Countyan and veteran, Mr. Jack Whitaker. In, in addition to that, and we'll offer, offer a moment in silence for him, but I'd also like to honor Mr. Ken Brothers. He was 96-year-old when he passed away here in Versailles. And he was also a United States Army Veteran and a WWII Veteran. He was a dental technician throughout his life and he served various dentists and retired from the VA after nearly 40 years. The, the through line and the thread of their lives is that not only were they veterans, but they served veterans. They cared about veterans and they advocated for veterans' causes in all of their free time for the entirety of their life post-service. Ken was also a long and faithful member of the Northeast Woodford Water District Board. At the ripe age of 92, 2-years-old, I asked Ken if he wanted to remain on the board. And he looked at me like there was no reason why he wouldn't. And he has done a really good job. The condition of the Northeast Woodford Water Board is a testament to his service on that board. So we send our prayers to Ken's family and to Jack's family, and we honor them tonight as great Woodford Countyans and veterans. And if I could, offer a moment of silence in honor of the great Jack Whitaker and Mr. Amen. Thank you all for that indulgence. Now we will move on to the good of the county, the greatest county in all of the nation, Mr. Peckney, I'd say the universe, Woodford County. And tonight, we have a very special recognition. We have Woodford County and state champion wrestlers with us tonight. If you would, ask our state champs to come into the courtroom. Season's over, so they're having a little food at the reception. Your families, you are welcome to come in. So just a few weeks ago, we honored Woodford County State Champion Cheerleading Team. Just a few weeks before that, we honored Woodford County's cross-country State Champion, Addie Moore. And I told Rick Wade, I said, "We probably need to keep the banner up because we might have a few more state champions." And Lacey, Lauren, and Isaac proved that to be correct. The head coach of the Woodford County Wrestling Team is Cody Lewis. I've known Cody for many years. He's joined by a future Woodford County State Champ Wrestler's son there. John Walton Jr. is also a coach. Tyler Stork, John Hernandez, and Tristan Brooks. And they are also nurtured and cared for and encouraged by their team mom, Heather Rogers. We have their, their proud parents with us, Kaylee and Seth Johns, Sarah and Zach Gilbert, and Shelley and John Walton are with us as well. But I'll start out individually because you, you all individually deserve your recognition. I mentioned this when I spoke to you all, but Woodford County has a proud and storied generational history of Woodford County wrestling excellence. And you all add your names to the rolls of some of the best wrestlers to ever take a mat in this state and even in many cases in this country. Isaac Johns, a member of the Woodford County Wrestling Team, achieved a remarkable accomplishment of winning the KHSAA 140-pound male state wrestling championship this year. Isaac Johns has demonstrated unparalleled dedication, skill, and sportsmanship throughout his wrestling career, serving as a shining example of the gold standard for his peers in our community. Isaac John has brought pride and honor to Woodford County, representing Woodford County High School and our community with distinction on the wrestling mat and outside of the wrestling room. And therefore, today, we honor and congratulate Isaac Johns, Woodford County Wrestling State Next, we have Lacey Gilbert. Lacey achieved the remarkable accomplishment of winning the KHSAA 126-pound female state wrestling championship. Lacey has demonstrated unparalleled dedication and skill and sportsmanship throughout her wrestling career and is a shining example of the Woodford County gold standard of wrestling excellence, bringing pride and honor to Woodford County and representing our school and Woodford County with distinction. And Lacey, we're congratulating you on your state championship tonight. And last, but certainly not least, Lauren Walton, the first woman to ever win a Woodford County Wrestling State Championship, also just recently won the KHSAA 132-pound female state wrestling championship. Lauren was also crowned the prestigious title of KHSAA Most Outstanding Wrestler of the entire state meet. Lauren is a three-time state champion, and she's demonstrated unparalleled dedication, skill, and sportsmanship throughout her career. And she too is a shining example of the gold standard of Woodford County wrestling excellence, representing our community with honor and pride and, and setting Woodford County apart in both the record books and in the wrestling history of Kentucky. So without further ado, would you all please rise to recognize our newest state champions? And if we, if we could, Cody, would you like to share a few words about our state champ at the mic? You don't have to, but we'd love to.
Oh, man. I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. These, these three wrestlers right here and the whole team have been dedicated and even today, they've already started their offseason, offseason practice for Nationals and everything. So they're very determined, very dedicated. All the hard work that they, that they have put in throughout the years has finally paid off for all three of them. And it's just, it shines through them. So congratulations to them, congratulations to Woodford County, and that's all I have to say. Sorry.
I'd like to open up the floor for any members of the court who'd like to share anything and accolades to our state champions before we do a photo.
Yeah, just congratulations. I know what it feels like, the sacrifice that you all put in, not eating. I've been there, done that. I think I went 10 years without eating Thanksgiving dinner. So I, I know what you all put into this and congratulations.
If I could, have a brief recess for our fiscal court to line up in front of the sign there and take a photo.
I'm gonna need to get a couple of names other than the obvious court members.
You got yours?
You go ahead.
I'll go.
What about team mom?
Come on, girl.
I'm gonna let you team mom, maybe get in between Kelly and Wiles.
Yeah, come on.
Come on.
Thanks for making me feel even older. I like to think that I was the last hurdle Tommy had to get over before his glory.
That's right. I bet.
I told Coach Shilzo on Wrestling JV, that I could became the water boy for the basketball
All right. Thank you all for the indulgence. It is, it is a wonderful thing to see our young Woodford Countyans excel in the way that they do. Squire Gentry talked about their sacrifice and their, their effort and determination, but we've been really blessed with some really exceptional athletes. And the, the even better part is that all of our kids in Woodford County are wonderful in their own ways. So thank you, members of the court. I'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of February 13th. There any additions, corrections, or comments regarding any of the minutes? Seeing none, is there any objection to same? Also seeing none, I will approve without objection. Our committee reports. I'd like to thank Danny Bradley for joining us. She is the Chair of the Woodford Foundation and I wanted to ask her to, to give us a report from the Woodford Foundation. Thank you, Danny.
Right. So I didn't ever wrestle, but I did serve on the school board and they felt remarkably I just came tonight on behalf of the Woodford Foundation to thank all of the members of the fiscal court and Judge Executive K for your recent allocation in funds for the foundation. Little bit about what we do. We were founded with the notion of filling in the gaps for Woodford Countyans. Our focus is only on Woodford County citizens and on families within our community that have a need. We do utility assistance, one-time payments of utility bills. We help with food for families that are going through a crisis. If we have, you know, a student that's undergoing treatment at any of the hospitals, we offer feeding assistance for their families while they're in the, the hospital if they need that. And most recently, we helped house folks who didn't have power during the, I guess it wasn't a storm, but it was a very cold spell. And it was great to be a local charity that was nimble enough to respond to the needs as they were identified by folks like Judge K or Mayor Troggett or our family resource officers at the schools. And we were able to find hotels for those families during that time and make sure that they were out of the cold and, and safe during that, that weather time. So just wanted to come and say thank you all. We appreciate your support. We'll check back with you periodically and let you know how your funds are being used. I think that's a big thing with charitable giving is accountability and, and letting folks know, hey, here's how the funds are actually impacting the citizens of Woodford County. So thank you for the opportunity to, to speak tonight and thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. And I would also note that one of the other benefits is that not only were we able to help folks find a temporary sheltering arrangement, but then that, that helped us usher in additional resources and help and wraparound services to find more long-term solutions to the problems that they were facing. So thank you, thank you for your leadership. I would note that Tim Middleton, I believe, is the Treasurer.
He is, yes.
Drew Chandler, R. Drew Chandler is the Secretary. And there are other good members of that board as well. Thank you. You're more than welcome to stay and you're also more than welcome to be excused.
I sneak out to the kids.
Thank you. I will move on to our Budget and Finance Committee report. The Budget and Finance Committee met and we discussed budget items. There was a unanimous motion to accept into the record the CASA budget request and recommend that to the full fiscal court. We had a discussion about the Bluegrass Community Action budget request from the senior center and the BG cap in general. And there, there is some discussion about talking about, in the same vein as the Woodford Foundation, increasing some of our support services through Bluegrass Community Action. We received the RJ Corman estimate of $382,595.12 for the railroad crossing for the Big Sink sidewalk. We got that estimate and reviewed that in our Budget and Finance Committee. We also received the neighborhood grant from the Marywood Neighborhood for their application. We received the application and it was recommended for the Budget and Finance Committee that we conditionally approved that allocation, excuse me, conditionally approved the application contingent upon the normal contingencies of the program and additional funding by the city of Versailles. And so that was recommended to the full fiscal court. I would ask if there is a motion to approve that recommendation. Motion by Squire Varner and second by Squire Carl. I would open up the floor for any discussion regarding the Marywood Neighborhood Grant Seeing none, the motion to contend, contingently approve that application pursuant to the city of Versailles is funding. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We discussed other budget and finance matters and we adjourned to a committee of the whole. We approved unanimously an indigent funding request and we went into an executive session to discuss potential litigation, but there was no action thereon. That is the full committee report. I'll move on to reports of our departments and agencies. I'd like to start out with our Treasurer's report. Sorry, the other side. Madam Treasurer.
Our balance tonight is $16,501,612. It's about the same as it was last year at this time because we had, we cashed in that CD. So it's a little, it's a little higher than it was this time last year, but any questions?
And I know the Treasurer is hard at work on budget and a lot of other things, but is there any questions for the Treasurer? Seeing none, thank you, Madam Treasurer. We have our county clerk with us. Madam Clerk, Sandy Jones says, "It's not surprising, it's all the time," but she's been very busy.
Been a little busy, yes, yes. So I have two things on the agenda this evening. Bluegrass Integrated Communications is the invoice that I have before me. And the reason that this is necessary, the sequel to reapportionment, is the fact that we took the issue before the county board of elections to reevaluate the precinct lines. It just made sense and it was decided upon unanimously to change our 19 precincts to 18, excuse me, eight precincts that follow the same magisterial district lines. And hopefully, you know, with our school boards, we can maybe, the school board can work with us a little bit and control a little bit more of where we've got some lockouts on our ballots. But this was a beginning. So when we move, by statute, when we move any voters from one precinct to another, we are obligated by law to notify them that you're now going to be in this precinct. So these postcards that are going to be mailed are going to be full of information. It's going to tell them not only what their new precinct is, but it will also have a QR code on there so they can zoom in on it. And they've got the choice of either using the QR reader to take you to our website or the website will be there as well. It will go, it will tell you anything you'd want to know about an election, the new maps, all the way down to the ballot. So it's very informational. So they're going to be getting this in the mail. So, they're going to be getting this in the mail in addition to a text notification that we're hoping that we will be able to utilize that Woodford Alert. And then that way, if anyone wants to receive any information from, as far as an election information, they can notify us, we'll have that. And Drew and I have already gone over the specifics. So, this, this postcard is mandatory, but it's also going to be another tool for us to get a lot of information out there about elections, a lot of contact information. So, we've got 13,378 voters that we need to reach out to. The way Bluegrass Integrated works, the reason this vendor sounds familiar to you is because we use them for all of our postcards that go out to every voter. But they always require that the postage is paid first before they will go into the printing. So, it's $5,217.42. So, that's the amount that I'm, I need to come before you and ask for tonight so I can get this started.
So, I entertain a motion to approve upon the recommendation of the county clerk to approve the invoice from Bluegrass Integrated Communications in the amount of $7,663.21 with $5,217.42 of that total to be paid immediately for the postage for election mailers. Motion by John Gentry, second by Kelly Carl. I'd open up the floor for any questions. Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to table the e-poll book, No Ink is the company that we've used. I'm not real pleased with one, one part of this quote, and I need to question it further. The reason, the reason this is going to be brought before you this evening is because of the $138,000 grant money that we have. It has been approved, we have to spend it by June 2024. $80,000, $80,83 is already appropriated for the new voting machines that are on order. So, 138 minus our 80 that we have already pledged for this leaves us 57.9. And then this quote that we have here for five e-poll books was $15,995. And I just need to verify something first, so if I may, I'd like to take that off, put that, table that for this evening.
Madam Clerk, may I, may I offer a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
The, the one thing is, is that these, these funds are budgeted, they're expected, we need to make sure to meet the requirements of the grant. I, I would, if, if you are good with it, I would entertain a motion to conditionally approve that amount upon your inspection and review, and then if needed, the judge executive and the county attorneys. And then that way, if in the next two weeks you get everything sorted out, we can communicate that to the court and then approve it without having to wait for the next meeting.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
So, I entertain a motion to conditionally approve the quote from No Ink, No Ink LLC in the amount of $15,995 for election e-poll books using HB1 funds, and to authorize the county clerk, judge executive, and county attorney, if necessary, to sign off on any documents related thereto in order to satisfy the grant program. Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Downey. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
If I may, may I make a report on, thank you, first of all, for your patience. I think I had explained to you with CAVIS and the rippling effect that we had with that, our ad-val journal just finally balanced yesterday morning. So, all the taxing districts were paid, and I had delivered all of the checks to each one of the taxing districts yesterday. So, now we are paid up as far as our excess fees. The November fees that were paid in December, that was $45,845. We were able to pay January 1st, January fees before we did December because December's was just worked out today and just paid. But the January fees that were paid yesterday was $97,395. And then in December, we were, because of you being so gracious and allowing us to get all of this worked out, that was $37,141.21. So, now we're all paid up and our excess fees are in good order.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And do you want to share the election dates and information as well, just emphasize those for everybody in the public?
Sure. The absentee ballots will be starting to go out on April the 5th. We still have Senate Bill 61 that is on the floor. We're hoping that it doesn't get any traction, but at this point, that, that will dictate whether or not we have early voting or not. So, assuming that early voting does move forward, we will be May, that's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, May the 17th, 18th, and 19th. Election day is the 21st. And then, if you remember how I explained, we've got that six-day in-house absentee voting. So, the six days prior to that Thursday on the 17th, and I don't have a calendar in front of me, but that would be the in-house, unless the Senate bill changes something once again. But as, as we are, we will be at Falling Springs, as we have in the past. We will still have our four voting centers. Our voting plan was passed this past Tuesday, and we're in good shape moving forward.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I know that we really appreciate the Parks Board and Rich Pictor for always allowing us to use Falling Springs, and it's a, a really important asset to our community and really gives us a lot of ability to conduct our elections in a safe and secure manner.
We've got a mega voting center, so, yeah.
Yes.
It's wonderful, yeah.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you so much.
Any questions for the county clerk? You are more than welcome to be excused.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I would just report from the Planning and Zoning Office that there is a comprehensive plan meeting tonight at 6 o'clock at Versailles United Methodist Church out on Payne's Depot Road. And that meeting, which is up on the board there, there's also one this Thursday at 6 o'clock at Northside Elementary. And these are, in our comp plan sessions, we decided that it was important for the community to understand the current comp plan. So, these two meetings are specifically about sharing information about what the current comprehensive plan says. We will try to get out here as quickly as we can to, to maybe have some folks over there, but these will be livestreamed. And again, there will be one in Midway, and I appreciate Steve Hunter for the work in getting that together. So, I'd like to now, as part of reports, call on Assistant County Attorney Phyllis Mattingly to give the court an update.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to report on the status of the softball, youth softball, Kentucky youth softball request for approval by the court of their attempt to refinance their loan, their current loan with City National Bank, now formerly Citizens Commerce. And so, essentially what has happened is Cassie Barnes, who is representing the Kentucky Youth Softball, has sent me documents, which I have reviewed. I have sent those back with comments that I thought were, changes that I thought would be in the court's best interest. Particularly, the, the one change was that I wanted to make sure that we narrowed down Kentucky youth softball's ability to get additional funding under what's called an additional advance clause without first getting approval by the court. And so, Cassie and I are working on that. The, it's my understanding that Kentucky Youth Softball was appearing before the city council, I'm sorry, the Board of Education last night, and I don't know, I haven't heard any report on what happened there. There's a document that the Board of Education also has to approve, which is a subordination and a tournament agreement, which is a legal, you know, a law school term that we can all go into. I had to look it up, Judge, I'd forgotten what it was. And, and so, I think we'll have everything worked out to where the court will be able to consider their request fully on March 12th. They would like to get their loan on March 15th, so we're within that framework.
Thank you, Assistant County Attorney Mattingly. And I, I did get a report from Les Anderson that it did pass the school board last evening. So, we will have that on our docket for our next meeting. Thank you so much for that update. Any other department or agency seeking to give a report to the court? Seeing none, we'll move on to the general orders and the unfinished business. The claims to be paid by this county are before you. Are there any questions or comments on any of the claims? Seeing none, are there any objections to any of the bills to be paid? Also seeing none, I will approve the bills to be paid without objection. We need to ratify a February 20th, 2024 email vote approving the claim for the Visa card in the amount of $2,451.84. That is the sheriff's office in the amount of $309.85, and the Elon Financial Services in the amount of $2,778.60. Is there a motion to ratify saying?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Varner, second by Squire Carl. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The next would be to approve the claim for Bachman Auto Group in the amount of $55,106 for a 2024 Tahoe for the Woodford County Sheriff's Office using asset forfeiture funds.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Downey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the claim, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. That's the total sum of the claims. We do have a transfer, is there a motion to approve the transfers as presented? Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We've dispensed with several of these items. There is an update on the Lafayette Historical Marker. The letter was sent to Mr. Julian Iker of the Lafayette Trail, Inc., with the coordinates for the sign to be placed at the Woodford County Historical Society. We met with Winfrey Atkins and Bill Phelps of the Historical Society, and they were excited about the Historical Society being on the Lafayette Trail, potentially bringing visitors and those interested in that history. And we worked with the city and the county and the Historical Society to get that together. Squire Gentry recommended that we include them in that last discussion, and that was fruitful because we actually decided to put it on their grounds, which was good. So, thank you, thank you. New business, we have some facilities usage requests. The first would be the request of the Conservation District to use the Hupman Pavilion Bathhouse Concession Stand and Exhibit Barn located at the county park for the 2024 Farm Tour, Friday, July 19th through Monday, July 22nd, 2024. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Gill. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. We also need a motion to approve the courthouse being opened on Saturday, March 16th, 2024, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. for the Chambers St. Patrick's Day event located on Court Street.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Blackford, second by Squire Carl. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. Madam Clerk, anything additional on the agenda that I have missed? Well, then I would like to move to announcements, and we will start out with the former Woodford County Wrestling state champion and current birthday boy, Squire Gentry.
That's why I like you.
Go Cats, I got nothing, thank you.
Happy birthday, Squire Gentry. Squire Varner.
I have nothing, Judge.
Thank you. Squire Carl.
Nothing, Judge.
Squire Downey.
Two things real quick, tomorrow there's a health and wellness roundtable focused on women's health, and they have a women's panel tomorrow at the Chamber from 9:00 to 10:00. And then Thursday, Mayor Trogg is doing a State of the City address at noon. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Squire Downey. Squire Blackford. Thank you, sir. Squire Gill.
Nothing, thanks.
Thank you. Squire Brown.
Nothing, Judge.
Squire Kay.
Couple things, Judge. Happy birthday to, to Squire Gentry as well as our court clerk. And I also wanted to let, give everybody an update. I, I was able to drive several routes last week in addition to what Tracy Wright has already driven for robotics, and that's, that's moving along, and hopefully we'll have as much of that in place as possible as we look at the budget going forward. The adoption of our, of doing so, last year, we, we got a little bit late into the, to the year, into the fall, and we couldn't drive the routes until the roads were clear of tree, of leaves and other things. But that's progressing well. And we talked in the committee of the whole about broadband, and just want to emphasize to folks to reach out to us if they have questions, to also make sure they sign up on fiber dot allpointsbroadband dot com as well, because it's, as we're talking about the process of appealing and for folks that, that are over speculated or overrepresented by their current providers on the speeds, it's really important that we get documentation on that. So, signing up on there can be helpful, as well as, we're going to have some more information for folks about how to do a speed test properly and create documentation of that, so look for that probably at our next meeting as well.
Fiber dot allpointsbroadband. Thank you. So, I'll move on to the county attorney, and you all noticed that there's a conspicuous absence in the county attorney's chair, and that is because Alan is attending to his mother in his hometown of Lebanon, who is dealing with some health issues. And we pray for Alan and his family. I would like to ask Assistant County Attorney Phyllis Mattingly for any announcements that you may have, and I'd also like to extend our thoughts and prayers to Alan and his family.
Judge, there, I have nothing other than just to second your comments about Alan. I know that this is a, a hard time for him. He is, he has not been in communication with his office, which if you know Alan, is very unusual. So, I think we can just keep him in our thoughts.
That's exactly right. I, I don't ever remember a fiscal court that Alan has not been in, been involved with, and he's been intimately involved actually with a lot of things on this agenda, but for him to actually be out of the office, he is a mainstay in the courthouse, he never misses a docket, and he very rarely ever, if he, if ever, misses a fiscal court meeting. So, you only get one mom in this world, and mothers are the best, and we send our thoughts and prayers to Alan and his family. Thank you. Thank you, Phyllis. I do have several announcements. The first being, I'd like to deliver somewhat of a birthday present to Squire Gentry in that the KIA, the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, has started the process through the Clean Water Grant Program for the $1.254 million project for Woodford County for Little Germany, Shore Acres, Four Acre, Watts Ferry, and Hippie AG Water Project. And it's interesting, John was talking to me yesterday about when was this project going to get going, how we get water down to these places, and that process has began. We have until 2026 for all the money to be expended. It is through coronavirus state fiscal recovery funds that, that will be obligated, but we're working through the Bluegrass Ad to make sure that gets done. We were supposed to have an agreement by, for us to review, and what I would request is conditional approval upon the inspection of myself and the county attorney to approve the initial grant agreement so that we can get that process started and not have to wait two weeks if it comes in the, in the emails in the next couple of days. So, is there a motion to authorize the judge executive and county attorney to disseminate and approve an assistance agreement that will be executed between the county and the KIA to proceed with this cleaner water grant program?
That'd be a big motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Brown. I'd open up the floor for any questions or discussion. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. I'd like to note that last night at the Woodford County Library, Squire Blackford was there, Squire Gill was there, Squire Downey for the Clifton History Project. I want to thank Tim Middleton, the Woodford County Library, and the amazing Sue Finney for all the work that went in to put together that program. Unfortunately, Sue was sick and couldn't be there, but it was a really great turnout to explore the deep and rich African-American history that is part of not only the boat ramp property in Clifton that is in possession of the county, but also the entire Clifton area. And it was, it was so well-attended, there was a lot of great discussion. Rick Wade was there, is a longtime river resident himself. But it was so beautiful to see such a diverse group of folks with all the shared experiences and love for the Kentucky River. It, it shows that what we did as a court to work through that process, to acquire that piece of property is important, and I think it's even more important. piece of property is important and I think it's even more important for us to honor the family and the legacy and the history, particularly the African-American history of Clifton. So, thanks for all that were involved in that. I had a report from the Woodford County Road Department. We get the Hifner Bridge fixed and painted and ready to go and it gets hit by a semi. And so, the Hifner Bridge is now closed for further inspection due to being hit by a semi, which is unfortunate. They do believe that the fundamental structure of the bridge has not been impacted. However, the trusses that go across it were definitely impacted and they could impact traffic, but we'll have more information on when that will be reopened, but we got that information just this afternoon.
Were they lost, Judge?
Were they lost?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know, but.
What business they had doing up there?
I'd also like to note, I was just passing a note that Gary Baugh, who is the husband of Janet Baugh, just recently passed away and I'd like to offer a moment in silence in his honor if we could, please. Amen. Thank you all. We adjourned tonight in honor of Ken Brothers, Jack Whitaker, and Gary Baugh. Thank you all for your indulgence. We're so proud of our state champions. If there's nothing else to come before this honorable body, I will deem us adjourned in honor of great Woodford Countyans.